And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the pistol with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming out. We've got some people here today, that's good. Alright. Just gonna need to approve the minutes from October.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for October. I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay. Let's approve the bills for November.
Is Black Mountain Software the software we currently have?
No.
Oh, that's the new one? Is that like a down payment to you that started?
That's the implementation fee. They did say I should be live like July, August.
So I was just gonna ask you. Thank you. And will they, does that mean you'll be trained by July or August?
I took a training class today.
Nice, glad you like it.
It'll be new to learn. No, I think it'll be a lot easier than what I'm doing now.
Good. Is Brian learning it?
He will. That's new information. At least like.
I heard about three minutes of it when I stepped out.
If I die or I get fired, like you have the ability to train somebody else through their trainings. That's part of the service.
Good. That's very nice. At least the software has been ready to approve, so I don't know, but people still reading, so I don't give up. People are reading. I move to approve the minutes for October.
Pay the bills.
I'll pay the bills, sorry. I don't know what it is. Totally going there. Oh, thank you. I moved to pay attention.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Yeah, thanks. Okay, we'll move on. So the computer software, I went through it, I already started talking about it, so.
Sorry, I didn't see it on the.
It's good.
Not really. So I know we approved the computer software, but when we went to the Blue Cross meeting, I was able to talk to another city clerk of Albion. And he gave me some advice and some things that I hadn't thought of when we were talking about specifically the ability of having an online portal. Meaning like you guys could log in and actually like make your payments, see your history, just like you do with Rocky Mountain Power. Um, and so it's $1,200 a year to have that function. And I had brought up the price of stamps, like when you're thinking about that cost. Um, but he said it's also not just stamps, like. So in stamps for the whole year last year, and mailing like 150 bills a month, you're paying $1,440 just in postage. And then there's an envelope with that, which is about 10 cents. Um, per envelope, which is 225 a year. Uh, so you're looking at $1,600 plus. The factor that I didn't think about is the time that it takes me to sit there and stuff all the envelopes. Where with the online portal, people would have the option to get it all just emailed. I don't have to sit and do paper for everybody. So. And the other thing that he told me to tell you guys is if we do it now as we're signing up, and I have talked to the computer software company, we can still attach it to this. It's just the $1,200. There's no extra fee to set it up. It's already being set up right now. So I just wanted to bring that up. You know, I know it is a big change. It's.
It's $1,200 a year?
It's $1,200 a year.
Oh, yeah.
But you're spending more than that in stamps.
You really are.
Are you not gonna send out stamps and like, once you do this, you won't do paper bill?
No.
Or we still?
There's still an option for those who want a paper bill, but it would probably decrease. I don't know. Would you guys take it?
Well, how many people use the like the Visa thing, the tab?
I have about 15 people now. And it has helped people stay more.
Well, I think the online portal, I've talked to people about, they would love something like this.
You know, not everybody will use it right off the bat, but I think as times change.
We've also figured your paper, your ink, your electricity. All that stuff figures into mailing one of those payments or one of those bills out.
Yeah.
I think we should get like $1,200 a year.
And stamps are gonna be going up again in January, I understand, so.
I think we do it. I think we do it now, because we can always take it off if nobody ever uses it, then I think we'll find everybody uses it. And our collection should go down because of it.
Hopefully. I think just adding the electronic payment that we added has helped that.
I agree. I think maybe one more thing, bringing us up to, I mean, literally the 2000s.
And it's an actual online portal.
Exactly. It would be kinda nice to actually have.
It would change, like we would do away with this where we would use their credit card service.
But it would also be.
And that, so then the flat rate fee, it would actually go to a percentage.
Which is more accurate and fair to most people.
More accurate and fair. Yes.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Can you still set a set fee? What is that fee?
You could, yeah.
Because dealing with this, that you gotta set fees all the way into.
Well, but the computer software, like it would manage all of that.
Yeah.
And really, I think a percentage is most fair. Just because like. So on $130, average cost of a fee is $4.76. And then there's people that pay more than that sometimes, like if they have extra garbages, if they're catching up their bill. And so $5 doesn't quite cover that. And we do lose just a tiny bit each month. So percentage really is fair. But.
It's up to you guys.
Who do you think?
I, I think that there may be some that would still prefer the bill, but.
So and I asked him, I asked him his numbers too. So they're a city about our size. And basically, he said 88 customers use it.
So about 75?
Out of how many? Out of 150 customers.
Yeah. What do you think, Ellen?
It'd help bring the revenue down. Get more money in on our accounts. Make it easier.
It's not more money, it's just consistent.
Easier access for customers.
There's a lot of us old timers at home.
And you're right, there are those, but then I think of like Luann, she is very savvy on the computer. So, you never know. My grandma, she's 100 years old and she does Facebook and iPhone and. You never know.
Sounds like there are big grants.
Well, gotta make a motion. Make a motion to add that to the software.
I'll second it.
Add online portal, that's, that's why I got it.
The online portal. You second it?
I will second it.
All in favor? Okay, thanks. We'll just go ahead and add that in to the deal. Alright, um, the resolution for America 250 grant.
Um, do you want to talk about it?
No.
No. I probably know more, but she's been helping me.
So this is a grant we can get from the state of Idaho for 250, excuse me, $2,500 um, to help us. We're actually wanna put up some flag poles and flags out here and help it cover like another basalt bash. And part of what we have to do, it's kind of a lot of work for such a tiny grant, but one of the things we have to do is pass a resolution to apply for the grant. And so that's what this is. It's, hey, are we all okay with applying for this grant? And we pass this, and then we have to have, to have a letter from the mayor, from the county, a few other things that we're gonna have to jump through some hoops to get it. Um, but that's what this is, is to give us some money because the US is turning 250 years old and they wanna give us some money.
So it just says that we'll celebrate June 27th, 2026. And we're making flags down our main street. Basically what it says. I mean, it says more than that, but you know.
I have a question. Now, will this help that other grant of where we have to upgrade basalt? So we can get those other bigger grants for the roads and stuff like that?
This is completely separate.
Will that help, help that grant?
Nope.
Right, beautifying or upgrading that won't do nothing, okay.
This is just for fun and celebrating America. So.
So yeah, let's do it.
Gotta make a motion.
Somebody asked me.
So do we, would you just motion to approve the resolution for America 250? I move to approve the resolution for the America 250 grant.
I second it.
All in favor?
I would change that from 250 to 2,500.
Is that, is that? Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. We'll get her done. Alright, next.
So we all have to sign the letter, or somebody has to sign the letter too, to put in with this.
I think it's just the city, like city council, yeah.
Yeah, because we're all gonna sign one big letter, right? Okay.
Okay, uh, Brian, let's hear a maintenance report. Some exciting news.
Oh, lots of excitement, right? Nothing really new, uh, just getting ready for winter. Got the tractors cleaned up and serviced and getting ready to put the plow on. I dug out an old post hole digger. Looks like it's been maybe used once or twice. I didn't know it was there, it was underneath a boat the guy had, I don't know. But I, I'm getting it out and servicing it, getting ready to use it. Uh, I put up some signs. Uh, there's a 25 mile an hour blinking sign by Brittany's place. And 35 mile an hour blinking sign on Oregon Road just as you come across the canal, or just before you come across the canal. There's gonna be another one on the other end of Oregon Road as soon as I put the post hole digger over. The mayor says we could use his, but we've got one, I'm gonna try it out before I put the plow on. So I've been doing that, uh, just getting the equipment ready. Uh, taking several classes. Been working on quotes for, we've got a lot of maintenance issues that are coming up. We are getting a new flow meter. It was supposed to have arrived on the 11th or 12th. Uh, that's for well three. That was a, that's a pretty good chunk of change there, it was.
About 13,000?
About $13,000 for that, so we're looking for that to be installed. Right now, the current flow meter isn't even reading. So that's, we are delinquent in that, I mean, it's. The last records I can see was 2016.
Now, that's a state thing, right?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we, we've been, they've been very generous to us. We've been non-compliant for a long time. Why, I think we're just small and they just fly under the radar, but. So we're trying to bring that up to compliance. Uh, we'll, eventually, we'd like to do the other one, the one over here at the booster house, it needs to be done also. But I've also just scheduled the cleaning for our tank. It's supposed to be every four to five years. I pushed it to six on this one. So we're waiting for a schedule on that one. That was about five grand to do that. In addition to that, uh, some of the. I, some of the, the expenses that we're gonna, they're just stupid amounts. I've got some pictures here. I, I know that I take a lot of time generally on my reports. This is pictures of our tank. I just made one copy, so if you take a look at it.
From six years ago.
This is from six years ago, showing some of the rust that's happening on the liner on the inside. Uh, so far, I've only got one quote in based off of these pictures. So I haven't had it inspected this, this year yet, so. Maybe the inspections will come back and they'll say, yeah, you can push it a little out, but. I know it was recommended when they did it six years ago that we start looking at relining it. The only quote I've got back so far is it's $110,000. It's, it's spendy. It is spendy. So it's just in the back of your head, these are some of the expenses that are coming up. And that, that doesn't include the fact that I've got a 30 horse booster pump that needs to be rebuilt. Uh, looking at about 10 or 12,000 for that. I've got a 40 horse that needs to be rebuilt. We're looking at 12, 14,000 for that.
Or more.
Or more.
The 130, what was it? It was like 20?
Yeah, the 50 horse was like 20 or $16,000. It had some other costs involved too, but. And then I have the, the well pump for the booster station that also needs to, it really should be serviced. And it's, it's gonna be another 12, 15,000 dollars. These are all things that, it's, it's all just maintenance that needs to be done. I can't say is when the last time they were serviced. Obviously, the 40 horse, uh, it's our.
Do we know when the last time this was? It's never been.
No, that's, the lining was the original from 2000 when the tank was installed. And they typically have about a 20 to 25 year lifespan.
Or about right there.
So we're 26 years.
Okay, because I, I need this worked. Is that where we're getting our drinking water from?
Yeah, that's the tank. So now, I should be fair, some of that that you see on that isn't rust, that's silt. It's a little bit of dirt that comes in through the, through the pump. So not all of that is rust.
You mean dirt comes in out of the ground?
Yeah.
Not silt.
And just so that you're aware, the, the first picture, the big blow up one, that's of the ceiling. The water never goes that high. So the tank's 20, 22 feet tall. The water only ever goes to just a little over 18 feet. So that's part of why that's rusting up there is it's never underwater. So it, it's, it oxidizes, there's oxygen up there. So it looks bad, but our water never really touches it. So unless it starts peeling and flaking down, then that's when it starts coming through the system, so. So yeah, that's.
How long will it be down if, if they do start to do this?
Couple of days.
Oh, so what's that mean for us?
Well, three can handle the system.
Oh, okay.
What we try to do is, we'd probably try and do it in the spring or in the fall when, when the system can handle.
A lighter load.
A lighter load.
Not July, I guess.
See, right now, we're, we're pumping about 26,000 gallons a day, which is nothing. It's, it's really nothing. That 10 horsepower pump over there, it wants to shut down because there's times where it's just, it's barely even running. It wants to keep. The system says you should shut down because you're not needed, but it has to maintain a pressure, so it does run.
So you said that tank needs to be relined? What do they reline that with?
It's an enamel. Depending, I can choose enamels.
We don't know for sure, but it is in the near future.
Yeah, they, they have a plastic lining that's more expensive and it's a little thicker, a little longer lifespan, but. You're talking 30 to 50 depending on, but it's a, it's a plastic lining and it's like half inch thick.
Like an insert?
It's a spray on.
Like a urethane?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I, and the, the quote I have was just for the enamel.
They quoted 110,000 for the enamel paint?
Yeah, it's.
It's not just paint, it's a special enamel epoxy.
Yeah, I get it.
Right. But that's, they'd have to go in and sandblast it and then prime it and then paint it.
So can a bladder be put in there?
I don't know.
So I was looking at bladders, so I was talking to somebody else about it today and they says, well, don't they make bladders that can go in there? I says, oh, I don't know, let's do a little looking. So I just did a little looking and it's not, so they, they, how, how many gallons is that tank?
50,000.
50,000.
So I looked up 50,000 gallon water bladders, not specific for a water tank, but a bladder, and they're like 9, 10,000 dollars.
So that, that is an option.
Maybe we could look into something like that possibly.
See. Does not having that line put us out of compliance with the state? So what happens if we don't line it and it goes back and fell or has?
It really doesn't, they may, you know, ding this a little bit. The biggest problem with it is if it starts corroding, then you lose the structure of your tank. So at a certain point, if you have too much corrosion, then you have to say, this tank is no longer stable. You can't use it.
So what, what I'm seeing is, the problem is, is this is looked at six years ago.
Six years ago.
And nobody did anything about it. And this seems to be this running problem for lots of years. That as things deteriorate, nobody wants to go and fix them because it costs money. And everybody gripes about the money. Where's the money come from? And so, as I've been in, all these things have compiled and it's just, we've had to fix everything, everything, everything.
Breaking down.
And so, yeah, it costs a lot of money, so. Should, should have been, it's like driving a vehicle and never ever changing the oil. That's what's happened.
So if relining it is 110,000, though, how much is a new tank? Can we just?
Oh, millions.
Millions.
Millions, okay.
Yeah, I, there's no way we could.
Seriously?
Even just to, 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 because we'd looked at a bigger tank, because this tank was undersized when they built it.
So when we first came in and saw the condition of a lot of things, we had the civil engineer that comes frequently walk through everything with us. And I was like, do we have another water project? We're still paying for the water project from 2000. We've got about five years left on that one. And he said, mm, you might be able to make a water project out of needing a bigger tank. But really, we have a maintenance issue. And he even kinda indicated because we haven't taken care of or used some of the things that they invested in, it might be a little hard for us to be approved again anytime real soon.
That would be the water.
But doesn't mean we don't try. But we do need to talk about like doing a water study, which is more money too.
So yeah, that's, I, I am proposing that we do a water study to start, they're good for 10 years. So that puts us in line to start getting grants or.
Because coming down the line, the state will require us to meter. I know they will. I mean, they're working on it on Idaho Falls in Pocatello. I don't know if any of you guys follow, we have Blackfoot. Any of you follow those pages and watch the comments on what's going on on their sewer and water and. And looking at it from this point of view, I just go, people are stupid. They don't get it.
Well, and the meters are a whole nother subject. I mean, we haven't used them for 26 years. And so most of them are probably in dish repair. There's some I can't, I, I'm gonna have to find them because people have decided they don't want their meters out there.
Or landscaped over them.
They've landscaped them, put rocks over them in some cases. And so I'm gonna have to go out and unbury. Technically, the homeowner is required to maintain that meter cap and make sure that it's accessible for me. But I don't know if some people even know where it's at.
So if they.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't.
Yours is buried in your shrubs on, on the south side.
One more expense that's coming up for sure is some new testing that's gonna be required by the state. And that's.
So this last Thursday, I went to a class sponsored by the DEQ. And their big emphasis was on PFAS, which, look it up. It's nasty. They've known about it since the 40s. It's forever chemicals. It's like test one. So we're gonna have to, we're, they're gonna start the testing. We'll have to have testing done by 2027. I've already asked them to start looking into it. They're expensive. There's only one, one lab in Idaho that can test for that. And the, the problem with it is if they find it in your well, there's not a lot they can do about it. So, uh, we have two wells. We'll have to test both of them at least twice. And probably twice a year, so that means eight tests at about $500 apiece. So that's coming up too. We just had a whole bunch of tests that we were needing.
Fail it, it's an expensive filter.
Yeah, if we, if we don't pass the PFAS test, then it's, you have to put a filter in. And it's, it's not economical to, it's almost easier to drill another well.
Well, even that's probably a connectivity to.
So I did, in that, just, just for your information, I, I printed these out. These are the same thing, I've just sent them in both directions. This is a map of our well and the impact zone of our well. You'll see two different, uh. You'll see two different patterns. Uh, well, three has a smaller, wider, uh, pattern that's more localized to this area. Well, two, which is our booster station over here, it's 193 feet deep. And the impact zone of that well stretches clear to the other side of Idaho Falls. So in those colors, if you look, the, it's blue, blue, yellow, and then red. So the blue is 10 years. So if something happens in that area, it hits our well in 10 years. The yellow is five to seven years, give or take. And the red is three to zero years. So it could take as little as, right now, to three years to hit. So that's kinda, this is what's affecting our water. I, I thought it was interesting. I thought people would like to take a look at those and, and see. You can go on the DEQ map and look at these. You can see every tank, every buried tank, every one. I mean, I took everything off of there just so you can see the impact zone. But you think about every business in that area is impacting our water, except, so.
What about these oil tanks that they're pulling out and putting after gas and the tanks are still in the ground?
If they know about them, they're marked on the map.
So is homeowner responsible or?
Technically is.
Because I know there are a lot of them leaking now.
Oh, yeah.
Another federal law that goes back to any owner that was ever involved, they can go after. We have official federal.
You wanna pass that other one around? That's, that's well, that's well two. So there's two of them there. One is well, one is well two and one is well three.
So Chris, I would pause, but they're tested?
Here's a funny thing. A year ago, when we were trying to do all the lead and copper, they came to us and offered a freebie test. And they didn't push it too hard. And I was involved with lead. And they didn't push it too hard, and I was involved with lead and copper, so I didn't do it.
And we were new.
And we're all new and I, I was, you know, I'd just call it stupid in the, in the things. I wish they would've pushed me, cause we could've done it for free then, and then we didn't know. No, it's that five hundred dollar test, twice for each well, twice a year.
And that's that same water study, you're missing too?
Uh, the water study.
The water study is like, what is our growth potential, our future needs?
That's just an engineer telling us where the problems are.
Sure.
Pay an engineer to do that?
Yeah, yeah, so.
So on the thing that could affect our water coming down, was basically there's any things like oils, stuff like that. Chemical related, just spraying.
Spraying, the the fact that they just put the truck parking lot right next to our well three. Which I need to go out and talk with them about, make sure they're not spilling oil fifty feet from our wellhead. Uh, technically, no spraying should be done within fifty feet of any well, so that's anything, that's. Really, you shouldn't be spraying anything that close to the well. And that's just small potatoes to compare to some of the stuff that's, you start looking at it. I mean, it scared me to death, and I don't want to scare people, I mean, that's not what. I'm sure that's not what the DEQ was trying to do, and that's not what I'm trying to do, I'm just saying. We're just, we're just dipping our toes into the regulations and the testing that's gonna come. So this hundred and ten thousand dollar lining for our tank. We'll see when our, when our tests come back, that may be a moot point. You know, it it may be that we need to look at drilling different wells somewhere else. Like I said, you can see in these, in these two different samples, one well is a hundred and twenty-three, one is ninety-three, or a hundred. Hundred and ninety-three, one reaches clear out the other side of Idaho Falls, clear up into Lincoln and Iona. The other one is just up here to Shelley, and so that's the difference in your, your levels.
Whether you better deeper or shallow or could.
That's it, it it's hard to say, the shallower one, you have a a more confined area that you control. The deeper ones, like I say, it's, there's things that, it crosses county lines. They were talking, they were showing some examples where they even crosses state lines, how do you control your. Your water when it crosses the state line? So, like I say, I I I thought those were interesting, I I thought I'd show them to you. And I, maybe I'll have Robin post them on Facebook, I mean, you don't realize where your water comes from. And. I thought it was interesting.
With all the growth coming, it it'll make a huge difference with the growth that's been going on in Idaho Falls and continuing.
So as you see the growth coming in all these communities around us, you might pay attention. And I think you're gonna hear more about it.
So it's a toxicity issue, sure, but it's also consumption too. Cause if our water's coming from that far away, and Idaho Falls is exploding like it's exploding, then our wells are gonna potentially run dry if it's not coming down.
So if you have a contractor up in Iona that's dumping chemicals right after he's done building something, uh, ten years.
I think all of that is part of the reason why they want us to meter.
Yeah.
All the curtailment stuff, you know, comment.
So yeah, there's, there's a lot that's coming down the line, but I know, there's nothing we can do and I. Bless Guy's heart, I I know, part of when he talked to me a month before he he passed. He said that he was sorry, that he was leaving me in such a fix, but part of the reason he was wanting to step down. Was cause of all these regulations, he did not wanna deal with them, and I, I'm seeing it now. So there it's, it, there's more coming and.
You're the sucker.
So I, I'm not saying that Bill's gonna raise right away, it's.
No, but we definitely have to start planning, so.
But these are things, like they say, I, and I kinda went over. You know, I've got, we talked about upcoming, the tank lining and everything, but just so you know. Some of the things we spent your money on this year, we had the test ten horsepower pump rebuilt, it was sixteen hundred dollars. The VFD installed on that was six thousand, VFD on.
Which is saving us money.
Yeah, they are saving us a lot of money, but the thirty horse VFD cost us twelve thousand.
Do you guys know what the DFE is?
DFT.
It's, it's a, a variable frequency drive.
So the owner doesn't run full speed all the time, it goes down with pressure.
It's like an idler.
Previous, previous before we fixed everything, the thirty horsepower was running full capacity.
All the time.
All the time, never up, never down. So all that's.
So you were using a great big motor to pump ten gallons a minute?
Yeah.
So now we're just using a small one.
Yeah.
But the, the well, the pump and motor was twenty-six thousand for well three. The well, the flow meter is thirteen thousand nine hundred. Uh, we did, we had some electrical costs, it cost us almost two grand for electrical on the VFDs. Uh, we had some compliance issues with testing that was almost six grand.
That electrical was a lightning strike, it caused a lot of that.
Yeah, and we still have some issues with our SCADA, our SCADA doesn't run accurately. It shows me kinda what's going on, but not.
What's that?
The SCADA, it's just a computer system, it's right next door, uh, and it monitors the wells. And the sewer lift station, uh, I've got a computer over here, it shows me on graphs when they run, when they don't. Uh, basically, every morning I go around and I verify personally at each pump.
Sure.
The flow meters, and then I come back and look at it on the computer and say, yeah, that's right, that's working.
That's gonna be needing to be replaced at some point too.
At some point, it should be replaced.
It's twenty plus years.
Yeah, that, the, the people that work on it, they have to dig a computer out of a closet. To even work on our system.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's so outdated, but.
Yeah.
So the, the, your money hasn't been wasted, there's, there's been a lot of updates, I mean, a whole lot of miscellaneous things too, I mean. There's a lot of stuff, so.
So, and I had Brian do a list in case people came, I'm glad you came. Um, just so you know, like, your money is going to maintenance and upkeep and. Things that haven't been done in a long time, and, um, so I made this to close out the year. And, um, this just shows them what all of our usable funds are, and I, I can pass it around if you wanna look at it.
So this one back?
Um, so, the general fund, it's broken down by general water and sewer funds. Um, the top yellow line, the revenue without carryover, what I mean by that. Sometimes we put from savings into the budget, so on the actual budget report. The expenses and the revenue match, I didn't wanna do that on this, I wanted you to see the actual budgeted amount. And then the actual that we brought in and spent, so. And then each quarter, I did the balance in all of our usable, like checking and savings. Um, throughout this last year on water, we did create an investment account. Um, anyways, and then I have shifted a lot of money over into an investment account under each of those funds. We're drawing more interest to help our money too, but I really wanna focus on water. And I wanted to present this like a story problem, so I thought it would be funny. So you go, the city of Bay Salt has, has to fix. Something for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but we only have available completely to pay all our bills, seventy-five thousand dollars in water. Like, that's, that's the sad truth of where we're at. When I started, it was only like forty, so we have built it, and we have done a lot of maintenance and upkeep. But the sad part is, we have to start thinking about, and I've been telling people to start paying attention. December, January, February, I want to have these conversations, I'm not saying we're gonna raise it right now, but I want you to think about it. I want you guys to be aware of what's happening, what's coming down, what's the possibilities, so. Just when we were talking, and some of the solutions that he was trying to come up with. Um, for the water tank, for example, say that cost us like fifty thousand to do a bladder or whatever. Um, just to put that in perspective, how much money would we have to raise? Your bill, our bill, we all pay a city bill, um, in water to make that fifty thousand. And that would be about thirteen dollar increase on your water portion. And I know, like, nobody's gonna like that, I hear backlash on the increases that we've done. Some very mean and naughty, anyways, I know it's hard, but we're in a, we're in a pickle. Relax, better way to express it, and so I do want input from you guys, what, what are our options? I know there's grants out there that you can try, but it doesn't necessarily always fit the bill either. And that's the hard part, and it takes time and money. And so there's no easy solution, I know we have a lot of people on a tight income, I get that. And, yeah, but we have to look at reality, because for years, that cost of living wasn't. Put into the bill every year, so no savings was built. And they weren't looking down the road, they were just looking at right now, and we can't do that.
You got a question, so if the bill were to increase by like say thirteen. Later on down the road, how much would we, or how long would it be till come back and say, let me increase again?
I don't know.
Like, I wouldn't want my bill to go up like a lot more, but.
Me either.
Instead of doing a thirteen to match where we need to be. Just ripping the way one that ended up and hitting a twenty, and then putting some of that into an account for later. You know, if that needs to go into interest bearing account, at least it'll be making a little more, and then later on, you know. Instead of every year, every other year doing an increase, increase it a little more than what we actually need.
So you think that that's better than doing a little increase each year? Because they're.
No increase would be better, but it is.
But I mean, like, here's the reality that I've been seeing, um, city of Pocatello. I saw somebody complaining on their city of the state, my bill's never been more than a hundred and twenty, and here I am, it's two hundred and fifteen, and now two hundred and fifty. But it's the city of Pocatello.
That's just water too, right?
I think that was their whole bill.
Okay.
But we all complain, well, you know, about our bill's gonna be higher, but we're all gonna complain when we have no water.
Exactly, and that's what I try to tell people.
It's gonna be, you know, um, do do, do you want water next week, or do you want?
And this is why I wanted people to come, like, I want you guys to hear, because I think when you're here, Azidro. I know you come a lot, Tammy comes a lot, and I think when you hear these things, like, your perspective is a little different.
So what is the total budget that's needed to fix the things that are down? Cause I just really quick ran the numbers I was able to tag down really quick, cause he was going through them, but it looks like it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cost.
Yeah, I was just.
An animal, of the enamel paint, the pumps that need replaced, so on and so forth, what is the total budget for those things that need to be done?
So right now, our. Our current maintenance budget in water. I'm trying to remember where we put it. I wanna say it's like forty. Yeah, maintenance for water, this next year, we have forty thousand just spent.
Just spent, okay, but how much is it gonna cost to do all the things that he wants to do, lining the tank, the horsepower pumps?
The lining doesn't have to be like tomorrow or the next day.
Right, like.
It's been six years since those.
So the pumps are the bigger part?
It could even be like, maybe they're like, maybe in another five years, right? But we still have to plan.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping the forty thousand is gonna cover the pumps that need to be looked at.
And then having to do that work too?
Uh, I've been going with the, it's S and G out of Blackfoot.
Okay.
Uh, they've been pretty reliable and, uh, they've been, they're a local company and quick. So it's, there might be other places I could look around and see if we can get it a little cheaper.
We're worried about, but one way to fix that is everybody goes out to metered water.
But that's not an easy fix, like we've talked about that.
It's not an easy fix, Blackfoot's water is high.
Yeah.
You won't, you won't be watering your yards.
Those meters that are hiding in the, in the roadways there, they're.
I mean, we're, we're trying to stay.
Six hundred to eight hundred dollars apiece, times a hundred and fifty.
We're trying to stay off the meters because you don't want metered water, you.
No, you don't.
It's ridiculous high. So originally, everybody used to water off a ditch, and as the water department grew and got better. Everybody just kinda migrates towards running just their sprinklers, and they neglect using the ditch. Well, there comes a point where.
We'll have to go back to that.
You have to go back to that, it's, it's there, you pay for it once a year, and it's available, it's.
Well, that's just required for the state anyways, you're not, you're not supposed to do more than acre with your personal well, from my understanding. Everything beyond that is supposed to be your water rights, so.
And I think life has gotten busy, I, it really has. Nobody has time to mess with the ditches, but really, that's what needs to happen. Everybody needs to get out, back into their blocks and have a little block party and clean everybody's ditches.
But that doesn't, still doesn't solve like our drinking water tanks, like, it's not totally a use problem either.
No, but if they start using the ditch water like they're supposed to, they'll be doing other, not using as much.
When they have to meter, it won't hurt so bad.
Yeah. That's gonna affect it, if they don't, what's going on right now is going to affect that bill irregardless.
It does save on our pumps, so like right, I I was saying, right now, we're running about twenty-six thousand gallons a day. If the heat of the summer, when everybody was watering and whatever they do with their water. Uh, yeah, we were eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. That's a lot for a hundred and fifty taps. So.
A lot of those homes though, have one and two hoses going twenty-four hours.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I do, there's been times I've walked away from a hose and forgot. To go shut it off, got sidetracked, I, I'm, we've all done it, but yeah, so. Like I say, that ten horsepower pump versus the thirty horsepower pump, I mean, it's about four hundred dollars a month difference. So if we're not using the water, and the ten horsepower can, can keep up, it's, it's a huge cost savings in electricity. I'm not saying that's gonna get us anywhere near the money we need for tank lining, but. I mean, it's a step in the right direction.
But part of, part of this whole problem is, is the meters are gonna become mandatory, aren't they?
Eventually, they will.
We have to start putting those in, sooner the better, because.
Part of the issue.
We can't afford a hundred and ten thousand dollars or twenty for a hundred and fifty meters to just. Put in, so it has to be started.
Yeah.
And gotta start somewhere, cause we can't take a big hit all in one year.
And part of that could be done in a water, well, I mean, that could possibly be done in a water project. But going back to what Husk said too, they may not, like, we may get deemed because we didn't use them.
We didn't take care.
Twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you will.
That's four years ago, yeah.
That brings you to a question for Garrett, is there anything that we can?
That brings me to a question for Garrett. Is there anything that we can put in to our regulations that say we have to keep on our, keep our maintenance up so the next. Whoever comes in actually keeps it up, so we're not back in this situation?
Oh, from an administration standpoint?
Yeah.
That's tough, cause current councils can't find future councils. Because the, the revenue expenses, all that flows, and so you couldn't bind a council to a certain budget.
I don't think it's like to budget to actually.
Costability increases, well, but that's tough, but like I said, you can't bind a future council, like, cause then the future council just changes the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the most important thing is just to have good maintenance person like.
Well, that's what I meant, is there anything we can put in to say we, you must keep up.
Like we've talked about it, like you wanna, every, everybody wants to blame who's sitting in these seats and especially current ones. And like I said, I've been getting a lot of backlash lately. And, and I read that on other cities pages too, but it really is like. We never came to the meetings before I had this job, you know, and we're at fault too, because we didn't pay attention. And everybody wants to complain, but hardly anybody ever comes.
Part of the, part, part of the problem is the previous people, they don't wanna raise prices, they don't wanna get.
Nobody wants to be the bad guy.
They don't wanna be the bad guy, so they don't do a whole lot. And so here I am, I'm like, when I come in, Brian comes in too, we're looking at everything, and we're like, everything's broken. We gotta fix everything, so that's what we've been doing.
Is that the primary reason why these things weren't maintained is budgetary constraints?
I think so, yeah.
I, I don't know, I think.
I think that that is part of the cause things.
Yeah, let me address that, cause I was here at some of the ones. A previous mayor specifically said, oh, we don't wanna, I don't wanna spend the money, we'll just kick that down the road.
Yeah, that's more.
Honestly, I've been here for eight years maybe, I'd have to check the date on that to be exact, but. A lot of this stuff wasn't even brought up.
So all, in my opinion.
It has nothing to do with us being neglectful, it goes back to like.
You didn't know what you didn't know.
Yeah, we didn't know, we didn't know, so for Brian to figure this out, like applause to you, because I've been here for. You know, eight years and they never brought up anything about a tank, like, you know, the only thing I ever heard about was motors. So, I mean, I, I don't think we can sit there and point fingers at everybody and say, well, this is your fault or this is our fault.
It's lots of his fault.
So I think we just have to look at what needs done and just take.
Right.
Steps to, you know, this is what we need to do now, this is what we budget for, oh yeah.
It slipped through the cracks, I, wholeheartedly. And I'm sure that there are things that I am overlooking.
When we moved in, the bill was only sixty dollars for water, sewer, garbage. I remember telling my brother who lived out at UConn Way and he was all, what? Cause his was like three hundred, cause he's metered. And that was two thousand and eleven.
Part of, part of the problem is, is you have one city maintenance person. That says, oh yeah, it's all fine, and when something happens, he doesn't say anything, he just kinda makes it kinda work. And he doesn't say anything and everything's fine, and for years, everything's fine, but when they come in, it's not fine.
One thing I'd like to suggest, uh, for you to put in the newsletter, check your toilets.
Yeah.
I just found out the, 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 I got three bathrooms in my house over there, one is strictly for the grandkids. The flapper is leaking.
Yeah, we talked about that before.
And I gotta fix that.
To fix your toilets, check your own plumbing too, cause yeah, it'll make those pumps just sit and run.
And you got twenty houses that have leaky toilets.
It goes up to our syrup ponds and then we have to ship everything to birth, which costs us money.
And then with that much water, you have twenty houses with leaky toilets, coming winter time here, that's that much water going into the ponds. That we don't want going into the ponds.
It does.
Nope.
So on the sewer, just, I know, I'm, I.
We're good.
We're still under an hour.
Uh, she was just pointing out that we need to make an agreement with first to just take so much every month. Well, and I would.
It's not every month.
But that's.
Yeah, it's not needed every month.
Right now, our, our lagoons are sitting at, they call it board feet. And if, if you put a two by four off the bank, how many feet it is from the bottom of the board to the top of the water, we're at twenty-two inches. Last year, we were sitting at sixteen inches. So we, we have a long ways to go before I ever need to pump. I mean, so we have done, the hot, dry, windy weather.
And we have been working with them.
And so the, this pumping down to them once in the spring has really helped. And so those lagoons are actually, they are, they are an amazing, amazing thing. They were put in nineteen seventy-three and they are still being that efficient. They've been sitting at twenty-two inches for the last two weeks.
That's good.
So in case, so we're, we're sending about twenty, twenty-seven to twenty-nine thousand gallons of sewage out to those ponds a day. And for that level to stay, that means you're getting thirty thousand gallons worth of evaporation. A day.
That's a lot.
That's good.
So those things are working really well, they, they, I, I have to, guy was adamant that we keep those and he, I think he was correct. Those things are working really well. If we only have to pump to first one month out of the year.
What is that cost as we do that?
So when I first came in, that first year, it was like fourteen thousand, maybe a little bit more. Now they're working with us and it's more like six to seven thousand.
Very little maintenance on those ponds. We did buy a new pump this year, which was about twenty thousand dollars to have it on standby. But necessary, necessary to have one on standby, I mean.
Just another thing that everything's fine.
But like I said, other than mowing it and, and keeping the weeds down around it, that they take care of themselves. Uh, I, I go around and look in the manholes once in a while.
They've been growing tomatoes.
I was just gonna say.
I've got another plant, there's another plant just a few feet down from it, so there are tomatoes growing out there.
We're getting lots of tomatoes.
Yeah, I like tomatoes.
So yeah, that being said, the sewer is actually running very efficiently.
Knock on wood.
Yeah.
I tend to agree with him, but I think it'd be better to do a heftier increase. And to start getting some sort of Nistake growing, because it sounds like it's a big hill and we gotta take a big bite out of it at some point, so. I know that sucks and it really sucks to say that I think my neighbors should pay more money for things, but. Again, where are we gonna be when we have no water down the road?
Everybody will mad.
Yeah.
Yep.
They won't be nasty, they'll be nastier then than they are now.
Let's just say I invested in some bear spray, so. I'm ready.
Um, on the other hand of her thought, what's wrong with doing like a slight increase with a. With a knowledge of hey, be prepared, in another year or two, we're gonna go, we're gonna go this way. Then people have time to budget for an increase instead of just slapping it right in your face.
I think that's a better way, just so that people can plan, and it, it's not that everybody's like, oh my gosh. But it's still, if they understand.
Yeah.
That we're going on, here's our goal, we gotta get there, and this is how we're gonna do it. I think that's the biggest problem we have, is they say. Oh, it just went up, but they don't know why, they don't understand it and they need to understand.
Yeah.
To that point, cause obviously you'll have to have a public hearing if you go over a five percent increase, but when you have your public hearing, your decision doesn't have to be immediate. Not many cities do, but you can say, okay, we're gonna go up and it'll be six months from now. So your public hearing doesn't have to be right then, you can have a public hearing way in advance. And you can do the public hearing to go up in four months, go up about five percent and four months later go up five percent. Yeah, that's a little more problematic, I would do it all in one jump. Okay. Because if, you know, if you're doing less than five percent, you don't have to have a public hearing, but if you're five percent or greater, you do.
Well, we still have time to brainstorm.
Cause you're gonna have to have your public hearing down the road.
And, and I have to see where garbage comes in in January.
Maybe we gotta go back.
Gonna go up again.
Well, I, I mean, probably, I, that's out of my control.
I had mentioned that earlier, sorry, I had mentioned that last month or two months or whatever. Kind of shopping around for garbage prices, and I know you mentioned that, do you still want me to look around, so maybe that's another, something we need to look at.
Problem is, is PSI is.
I was gonna say, I was just talking to somebody recently here, who's getting ready to move in and, um. He, he said some good things, he's like, I've used all the other companies and he's like PSI is reliable, the bottom line of price. So, I mean, we can still look, right? It doesn't hurt to look.
With the new mountain software.
Oh yeah.
Your garbage, your second garbage can doesn't cost the same as the first.
We can set it that way.
Right now, she has no way of charging a different price for a second garbage can.
So maybe that's a way we could bring it down a little bit that way.
Well, and I know PSI, when my parents switched, they live out in the country and they switched and PSI was willing to match whatever. So I mean, there's a bargaining chip maybe there.
I mean, I will say they have been really nice, very reliable.
And our driver, our driver, we have a really good driver.
And their holidays really are not that bad.
Question. So we're in the new budget now, right? The new budget year, so right now, tonight, they could do a four point nine increase. And not have to do a, well, not tonight, cause it's not on the agenda, but yes, arguably you could do it on an agenda without a public hearing.
Right.
But not tonight, cause it's, yeah, sorry, so they put it on, we put it on the agenda for next month, we can do a four point nine, not have to have. A public hearing. And now, sorry, getting this up a little bit right away, that's, that's one of the options, certainly, that would be something for council.
I think, I think we need to let everybody know what's going on.
Well, I was gonna say, do you remember when we were doing the other raises? Part of that was my learning curve and he had said, you don't wanna do multiple ones, cause it does irritate people and I did see that. But, so I kinda figured once a year, we need to look at where are we at. And that's kinda, this is gonna be a normal thing this time of year for me.
Well, yeah, we, we need to do a cost of living adjustment to everything. Otherwise, we're kicking the can down the road again and it's gonna bite us in the butt. Yeah, I hate paying more, but I'd rather pay a, a little bit more now that all of a sudden, holy crap, we gotta do this.
Well, fifty percent of the people don't wanna pay anymore and they're gonna fight that.
Yeah.
More than probably fifty percent.
They've really gotta understand why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In order to.
And it's hard, like.
They've gotta understand it and most people don't.
I feel like I've tried to do really good at trying to communicate that in newsletters, now the Facebook page is an option, but. I also, I almost feel like it's made it worse.
Well, I think we should put those pictures up and if you can find some worse ones, that might be helpful.
And like I said, those pictures are six years ago.
Yeah, so we need some new ones, and they need to be a little worse.
Zoom in more on the rest.
Get some of that still in there and.
Yeah.
Call it an earthquake before you take pictures of it.
So you have one bid done on it, so we'll get.
Yeah, we gotta get more bids, but.
And that's, that's a high enough price, I have to have a minimum of three, I, I believe on, on that one. But most of these projects that I do, I don't even, I don't even have to bring it, I can just say, let's do it.
As long as it's in our budget.
If it's in our budget, I can just do it, so I, but I don't like doing that kind of a thing. I like to bring it to the, to the table, so everybody knows what I'm gonna do.
Well, it's better in the long run, maybe it covers your behind and everything as well.
Yep.
Going back to Brian's signs for a second, I think we really need to let people know we're watching, how many people run stop signs. The other morning I was out in my yard and I'm just sitting there watching the morning traffic, zoom, through our stop sign, I'm like, you know there's kids and pets here, right? But please.
Like at forty-two.
Yeah.
Exactly, something else that needed to go on the agenda.
It is just a discussion item, so, um, last month when I had left, cause we were talking about how many people run certain stop signs and things like that. And you had just spent like two hundred and fifty bucks a sign for four signs or five signs, you know, so there's a thousand or twelve hundred bucks, you know, four or five signs. They worked for a while. Anyway, I gotta think, so the way task force work, task forces work. So ITD every year will give out grants and it's voluntary overtime for officers and they'll have a, a specific reason. So like a DUI task force, so a weekend you might have, instead of four patrol officers, might be twenty of them out there. Well, it's paid through, through this task force money and it's just voluntary overtime. Well, again, you know, well, why couldn't Bay Saw do that? Cause you're going to get the county patrol just like everywhere else in the county, which isn't sufficient for problem areas. Well, so I went and met with the sheriff and the chief deputy and you're probably looking at fifty to fifty-two dollars an hour. And they could task force it whenever you wanted, however often you wanted, um, you know, so if you, two hundred and fifty dollars a quarter. Now that's five hours of time where you can have a deputy just sitting in Bay Saw, looking at your problem areas. And most of the time you're gonna wanna do warnings and things, but you know, you do that every couple, three months, couple, three hours here, couple, three hours here. You're probably only talking a thousand, twelve hundred bucks, I mean, you get to pick, I mean, you guys will choose the hours.
Sunday morning.
You could choose the days, um, and it may be cheaper than the signage, but you do that, like I say, a couple hours a month. Here and there, I mean, it might solve your problem pretty quick, but just something to think about.
I also learned roundabouts, do you know what roundabouts is? I know how to make people mad. A big old planner in the middle of the road.
We stood here, I was with Brian and Robin one day, we watched six people not even stop, not even slow down at that corner.
I got up for two hours on a Sunday morning.
Nice stop sign. I've heard that Sunday morning, our main road is horrible, when I was out talking to people. They were like, this road is just atrocious, people trying to get to church, and I've heard that from a ton of people.
I know we don't have like a city police department, is that what we have to have?
Well, so the, so the county is your police enforcement, and so that's, and now you have them.
Yeah.
But like you say, they're gonna patrol like they do everywhere else in town, but for, you can basically hire them.
Rent a, however, we need a golf cart that has a little video on the top.
I checked with the sheriff's department years ago and they got rid, had gotten rid of their reserve deputies. Well, so this wouldn't, this would be full on voluntary overtime, yeah. But what I'm saying is if they still had a reserve deputy program, I was gonna, I went down, I was gonna sign up, because I still had all my host certificates and everything. And then I could, if they had anything, then I could be up here, I could be issuing tickets. But they don't have a reserve program anymore. Yeah, they don't have that anymore, but uh, and you know, like I say, you go off your full on, it's up here, but just something to think about.
Yeah.
We just work that into our budget.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, so, and I'm sure you're gonna have.
We're already gonna have to amend it.
I think it's a good idea, because on the problem mornings, Sunday, obviously, we have people running down this road. And the road, and it's like they're racing to go to church, they're just speeding through the, so I think it'd be a good idea.
Are you sure they're heading to church and not away from? Like twenty-five minutes an hour?
You know, actually, I just saw a clip, um, I'm trying to remember where they do that, but yeah, so it's a, it's a speed bump, automatic speed bump. And so the radar triggers it, if you're within the speed, you go over a spoon, and if you're going too fast, it drops out, so that it's like a three inch speed bump right there.
That sounds like a pretty good idea.
Yeah, that way. It's up level, so it doesn't affect the plowing at all. No, it's absolutely, well, then, uh, I don't, I don't remember where I saw that, but it was, it was most, I thought it was an awesome idea.
Hey, it's a springboard.
We'll just get those UK style pylons that just pop up out of the road.
I used to like the roundabout.
Okay, Robin, you don't like me, I guarantee, you may hate me now, but I'm.
Like, when we were over in Scotland, those roundabouts are terrible. Have you ever been on a four lane roundabout before?
Well, not only that, but you'll be going.
Four lanes.
No, we're just.
They also have stoplights, you stop in the roundabout.
They have them on like straight roads where you should have no roundabout, because they refuse to put a stop sign to allow like other traffic to come in from like a side street. They have them on like straight roads where you should have no roundabout, because they refuse to put a stop sign to allow like other traffic to come in from like a side street. So they'll throw a roundabout in there, and then, so you're driving down this road at thirty, forty miles an hour, and then all of a sudden, this car wants to come in, and they have the right away, cause they're to the right of you. And then boom, you have to stop down this road all of a sudden, because there's this tiny little roundabout, fifteen of them in a row down this forty-five mile an hour road.
There won't be any stop signs.
It's crazy roundabouts.
Ah, the Briton's supposed to get her husband home, this truck won't go roundabout.
Baseball anyways.
He doesn't, he only goes to the cabins, into the highway.
All right.
Okay, anything else? When was the, the hearing for the, the parliament?
It was canceled, yeah, I posted that on Facebook and.
What, are they gonna like schedule it?
Let's see.
Now, the last thing I saw, if I, I maybe I read it wrong, it went from the multiple to a single?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
We have a family raccoon over there, if anybody wants to.
Oh yeah.
I like raccoon.
We apparently have a lot of raccoons in town.
We do have.
Oh, I saw a fox tonight, as I.
Guy's not here anymore. Kelly.
It's her fox.
I think that lady lives down.
Yeah, but when, on her phone was going to the.
Her brother used to put up all those Christmas decorations.
Yes. She said that she sees a whole bunch going to her neighbors, she tells them that they have dead animals or something, and they keep going.
I hate to say, but it sounds like a person.
I told them that we need to know that we have pests, so, I've gone with my house, trust me.
We have traps out.
The neighbors.
I know you do, traps out. Right now, and we've had Marshall up here too.
Well, one down, someone hit one, one of the speeders on the way to church got a large one the other morning. We walked outside and Kayla's like, mom, and I'm like, what, and she's like. But it was, somebody cleaned it up by the time I got home.
So will I, did we see this?
I, that's what I said, well, thank goodness, one down from my house.
Kay, we need to adjourn, right, we're done?
Are we done?
Yeah, nobody's motion to adjourn.
Anybody have any questions?
Got any question?
No.
I second it.
All in favor? All right, thanks for coming out.